We didn't hear the secret knock. We're good.
All right. Good evening, Littleton. It is Monday, June 23rd. It's 6:01 PM. Call this meeting to order. We're going to start with executive session and then we'll reconvene after to start the public portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to put this into executive session?
Motion to enter executive session for the purpose of -- I don't have the --
Contract negotiations.
You have the --
I have it. Move that we enter executive session under Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the police.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Mark. Chuck?
Chuck's in favor.
Gary's yes.
Matthew's yes.
Mark's yes.
And I'm a yes. We'll be back in 30 minutes. Thank you.
Testing.
Are we good?
New world we live in.
And we're back. Should we -- do we vote first or should we move to the pledge and then take our vote?
The vote is on the agenda under 3H if you want to wait.
All the way down there? All right. No, that's fine. That's probably better. All right. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge, lead, most to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should have Lucas leave that.
I'll go over the agenda real quick. It's a fairly busy agenda this evening. We'll start with reading the mail. We'll move on to department and board updates, a couple of recognitions, some votes from the town clerk and LCTV, an update from the Lupoli Companies, and then we'll vote on the police union contract. From there, we'll go to public input and members' updates, two appointments around 8:15, and then a joint meeting with the planning board to discuss the Littleton Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have a licensing request and a discussion regarding our second cannabis dispensary license. After that, we'll have an update from Jim and we'll approve the minutes and adjourn promptly at 9:25.
Will be us.
Exactly. All right. So we can start with the mail.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Here we have current vacancies on town boards, boards and commissions that are appointed by the select board. We've got openings on Affordable Housing Trust, Agro-Cultural Commission, Clean Lakes Committee, Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Community Preservation Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Disability Commission, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee, Master Plan Implementation, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, Taxation Aid Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and an appointment by the school committee. There's an opening on the Finance Committee and also appointment by Littleton Electric Light Water Department. There's an opening on their Finance Committee. And here we have sign up to receive public notifications for the town. Scan the QR code on the screen or register www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety, town meeting changes, transportation, public health concerns, town events. Stay informed. And that would be it, Madam Chairwoman.
We'll move on then to department board updates and we'll start with a recognition of John Borowski. Who is -- there you are. Hiding in plain sight.
We've got Representative Arciero also that is here.
I didn't know if it was -- I guess we'll start with something. I'm the entertainment.
You're not seeing this gig.
Well, thank you very much. About a month ago, we -- the governor, Governor Healy, had put forward a new program which was honoring a veteran from each city in town for their service, for the work that they've done in their community. And this event just happened about a month ago. Bad weather that day. John wasn't able to go and I nominated John Borowski, not only for the work that he's done in his community but throughout the state. He's been a great advisor and counsel for me. I, in my time in office, have served on the Veterans Affairs Committee and worked on a number of issues with veterans' benefits, et cetera. And John's always been a steady -- he's always been a great servant for this community. And I wanted to sort of bring the recognition from the governor's office here to Littleton. And if I could, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from Governor Healy, on behalf of the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon this governor's citation and recognition of your dedicated service and invaluable contributions to the Commonwealth as distinguished member of the military community. Your commitment exentifies the highest ideals of duty and civic engagement. We are honored to celebrate you at the First Annual Military Appreciation Day, given the 22nd day of May in the year 2025 and signed by Governor Healy. And also, the Secretary of Veterans Affairs would also like to have veterans' coin from the governor. Congratulations.
John, we're in your debt. Thank you for, let's see, 12 years?
What?
12 years now that you've been with us?
12.
Yeah.
15.
15.
Mine is three months, so that's okay.
15 years of serving Littleton, of serving our residents, serving our veterans, putting together the Memorial Day Parade, working with every veteran that comes to you and finding the ones who don't. We really appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do I --
Yeah. Can we get a picture?
John, do you have any words you'd like to say?
Just thank you. Doing my job is normal, but whatever. One of my jobs anyhow, right, Gary?
Yeah. You know, you're heavily involved with St. Anne's Church and obviously --
Scholarship.
VFW, Legion, state stuff, so. I know you're going to continue that whole side. That's a lot of work.
Right.
You're getting off a little bit here away from the town stuff, but boy, there's a whole lot of work to do with veterans, so thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Squeezing. John, hold it up close, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm not going to say anything. You gotta turn a little bit more sideways. There you go. Always count on Mr. Baca.
We're going to have Kirby fill the comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know what you're going to say, Gary.
Thank you.
You already have me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All the applause. You have to switch with them. Can we do it again?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, turn the switch off. That's the good stuff.
Yep. And the good stuff continues. We get to have the opportunity to recognize Kirby Dolak, our LCTV Video Production Supervisor, and we'd like to congratulate him on his retirement. And it looks like Mark's got something to say about that.
Yes, I do.
Take it away, Mark.
Thank you. Kirby Dolak has been with LCTV starting first as a volunteer in 2012.
Wait, we didn't have to pay him all this time?
You didn't.
All right, I'm going to start over. And then as a full-time employee since January of 2013. For over a dozen years now, Kirby has helped to grow LCTV into the valued asset that it has become to the residents and employees of Littleton. He has brought a wide variety of skills and experience, not only in video production, but in computer skills, networking skills, financial knowledge, and in construction and carpentry, which has come in handy. He also was instrumental in forming VXBTV, which is Boxborough's local access channel whom we have an intermissible agreement with and we run their cable operations as well. At the beginning of the most recent Boxborough Town Meeting, Kirby was presented with a large picture frame signed by many of the town staff that he has interacted with for the past seven years, and he received a standing ovation from the 500-plus attendees at that meeting. This past Saturday, Boxborough honored Kirby by making him the Grand Marshal of the annual Pfeiffer's Day Parade.
What?
He is often the man behind the curtain at many of the shows you see and enjoy on LCTV, and he does not seek the spotlight or fame like me. So on behalf of his coworkers, the LCTV Advisory Committee, and the many vendors and volunteers who Kirby has worked with throughout his tenure here, we would like to say a very big thank you and best wishes in your retirement.
Would you like to say anything? You have what you asked for, Mark.
I didn't have the parody notes. Give me a --
You never do.
Unlike the speech I had to give at the Pfeiffer's Day, which was short and sweet, this will be the same way, other than I'm starting to tear up, believe it or not. This was the first room that I actually did broadcast from. That room did not exist. Everything happened upstairs. So if anything went wrong, we were up and down the stairs to figure things out. But lots of smiling faces that I recognize and have enjoyed working with over the many years, many new friends that I've learned and gained. I want to say thank you to the residents of Littleton. It's been fun. It's great getting to know all the department heads and also the department, I should say, the police chief and the fire chief. Had the honor to help the town get through COVID. Believe it or not, there were three people who basically kept the town alive on the video side. And I won't tell you what it was like the first night when Nina said, "Oh yeah, we're going to do a broadcast from the fire station. You make it a hybrid?"
Surprise.
We were there at 5:30 and we failed. But we had a lot of great successes and a lot of it's to do with the fellow team members that I have and also the support of the town and everybody that's here. So I'll say thank you and leave it at that. Thank you.
Two for two, five.
President of the Senate. Oh, yes, of course. Thank you. That's probably more appropriate for me to use the microphone, right?
Thank you.
This, probably tonight, is going to be a milestone night. Obviously, we're losing a gentleman who personifies this community at every step of the way in the 17 years that I've served in the legislature representing Littleton proudly. Kirby's there taking a photo. But the milestone really is not just that, Kirby. I think this will be the first time I'm going to be in a photo with you. I don't think I've ever actually been in a photo. That's fantastic. But Kirby, thank you for your dedication, your commitment. Certainly, these last five years have been difficult. We relied so much on LCTV here in Littleton for communication, for the great work that you do, and certainly the great attitude you have. I know it's not always easy. We've been at a lot of interesting events and Kirby has probably told me more than anyone next to my mother and my father to straighten my tie out or to move my jacket this way or smile or look this way, you know? And Kirby, I really appreciate it. And you're going to be sorely missed, but I know you're going to be around. I'm assuming in a consultant fashion somehow.
I don't know where you want to see me in December again.
We do. But Kirby, from Senator Eldridge and myself, be it known to all of the Massachusetts House Representatives, of sincerest congratulations to Kirby Dolak in recognition of 13 years of dedicated service to the Littleton community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune. Today, June 2, 2025, the State House Speaker of the House, Senator Eldridge, the Senate President, Jim Marcer. Congratulations, Kirby.
Okay, you have one more. Walk here.
Okay.
Now Kirby, remove the pen.
My goodness. I've already started.
I'm picking up the torch.
And you remember to sit outside now. Jim, are you getting into this hole too? Okay. So I think we need to have Gary come on the other side because we got to have Kirby in the middle. Yeah, there you go.
Making you proud.
Definitely.
Okay. One, two, three, one more. Kirby, bring your shoulders down.
We'll stick up to 9:25.
Why are you pulling here when it's 9:30?
Geez.
Sorry. You have to. Okay, there you go.
One more, one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all my bag of tricks.
All right. All right, Kirby, back to work.
Excuse me. Does -- may we go to have a quorum here?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Um, town clerk?
Good evening and thank you for having me this evening. So, as you all recall, in May, we took a vote to allow the town clerk to purchase some new voting machines in the total of $22,800. Based on Mass. General Law, I'm here this evening because you have to take two votes. The first vote is to certify that vote for May for the $22,800 that you should have in front of you. And then the second vote is asking the select board to decommission the current machines that we are using. So that's part of the vote that you have in front of you as well. And so what happens is I -- you take those votes. You have to sign it this evening. I have to take that and send it off to the state, and then the state has to approve that. That's part of the next part of going forward. And then once they approve that, then I can go out and go for the new machines. So that's what I'm here this evening to ask you to do.
Madam Chair.
Do you have any questions, do you?
I don't think we're going to need the accurate vote machines between in that interim period, but can we make that vote contingent upon receiving the new voting machines?
Yes, so I've already gone out and looked at what we have in front of us. It will take a month to get the machines. It takes about 10 days for the state to actually accept the vote. We have -- we're looking at possible vote in November, so between now and November, we shouldn't have an issue with getting that because if you sign tonight, it'll go out tomorrow.
My wife's maiden name was Murphy. Murphy's Law.
Well, I don't -- yeah, sure, you can do a contingent on that. That's fine with me.
I just don't know if that'll pass muster at the state, at the AG's office.
Could we recommission them if we needed to? After them being decommissioned?
It's like CBA 42.
Well, I mean, I guess you could, but the problem is that once the vote has gone out, it's already gone out for the state to approve the vote that we've already decommissioned them. So we have -- we basically have five months for this to happen. I don't foresee it being an issue. I mean, it should take no more than six weeks, starting tomorrow.
Just a cautionary tale.
If we get to October or, you know, and it's a big problem, we'll have to figure something out.
Yeah. We'll scramble. I think she'd probably -- I think the clerk would probably drive to Boston.
I agree.
Wouldn't leave without the vote and the approval in hand.
I agree.
We can hand count them afterwards, one vote.
Any other questions?
Nope. You've seen the new machines, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And other towns are using them?
Yes.
Actively?
Yes. Yep. So they are actually the newest version, so all the bugs have been --
Good.
-- out of room and we're good. We're looking to see.
And lastly, how old were our other machines?
24 years old.
Wow. They don't make them like they used to.
Well, unfortunately, the problem is that we don't have anything. If any of them break down, they just don't have the parts to replace them. That's the problem with the machines that we have.
Land obsolescence.
Good. Move that the select board vote to confirm the vote of town meeting appropriating the funding for the purpose of new voting machines.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Move that the select board vote to decommission the accurate machines currently being used in the town clerk's office.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
It's another 24 years.
We hope.
Let's see. Planning board? No quorum yet, right?
No, it's LCTV's next, I believe.
I know, but I'm asking whether we have a quorum.
Planning.
Okay. Mark, second. Enlighten us, please.
You should have all received the memo that I wrote to the select board?
Mm-hmm.
And I think it pretty much speaks for itself.
Thank you.
It explains what we're doing, why we're doing it, and just looking tonight for your approval to have the new position, Selecting Coordinator 2, that was rated by the Personnel Committee, Advisory Committee. And then our current production coordinator position, we're just going to put a 1 in front of the title. The job description remains the same, just the title. Those are the two items.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Move that the select board vote to approve the LCTV Program Coordinator 2 job description on grade nine of Compensation Plan Schedule A, permanent, full, and part-time employee.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Move that the select board vote to approve the LCTV Program Coordinator 1 job description and approve a little -- excuse me, a title change to LCTV.
Little change.
And approve a title change of LCTV Video Production Coordinator to LCTV Program Coordinator 1.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. There was a little change, by the way.
Yeah, just a little tiny one. Tiny title.
Should we go ahead?
Union?
Or should -- union first?
Whichever you'd like, Madam Chair.
Let's do the union vote first.
You guys can do it.
Okay. It's a good contract. I'm glad we got there.
Yeah.
It's a long journey and I really appreciate everything that everybody put into it.
Both sides, yeah.
Yeah. I'll take a motion to accept.
Move that the select board vote to approve the police union contract as presented.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, union.
Thank you. That's a big one.
Back at the table next week.
It's on the -- we need to sign this one as well.
They do.
You do have one?
Yes.
Why do we do this? Start a joint meeting? Do we just ask?
As long as they're in session.
Planning board, are you in session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a quorum?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Then we'll hear an update from the Lupoli Companies, please.
Good evening, everyone, members of court. Thank you for allowing us some time this evening. My name is Morgan Pearson. I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate and Development at the Lupoli Companies. Happy to give you all an update tonight on the project and what we've been working on and what we're thinking about as we go forward. First, I wanted to just express from Sal and Mary their regrets for not being able to join. Mary had her wedding this past weekend and so she and Sal are spending some time with all the family before she heads out on her honeymoon, but let's send our best and of course, they're keeping very full on the project, as I think you all know. I thought it might be best, and I'm not sure how much time I have, Jim, but --
45 minutes.
Hopefully, we don't need all that, but --
Going to make up some time.
Well, I think maybe we start with the video. I think it's the most exciting and, you know, give all of us something to think about as I kind of talk afterwards and maybe more of a detailed update verbally. But if I could just set the stage on the video before we press play, this is something our team spent a lot of time, energy, and resources on leading up to what's called the ICS, ICSE Conference in Las Vegas. It's the largest retail conference in the country and it was our way of kind of launching the project from a retail standpoint to the public. So we put together this illustrative video, getting people very excited about what we hope and what we intend to build here in Littleton based on the approvals that we received from, you know, dating back a few years now. So I would just stress a couple of things. One, it's illustrative and hopefully you'll see just how exciting it can be, but it was our effort to show and excite some of these tenants, which we were very successful in doing. We spoke to and met with over 30 different tenants across two days. It was a whirlwind, as you can imagine, in Las Vegas, but everyone was blown away and really excited about potentially bringing their businesses to Littleton. So I'll let the video speak for itself, but that's something to keep in mind as you watch.
This is really cool. News look. Maybe Morgan can come along.
So King Street's on your right there. You can see the old IBM buildings are a little bit re-clad in this image, but --
Looks a lot better on the big screen than on my laptop or phone. Flip phone? Yeah.
Tiny title.
Should we go ahead?
The union?
Or should, union first?
Whichever, whichever you'd like.
Let's do the union vote first. Okay. It's a good contract, I'm glad we got there.
Yeah.
It's a, it was a long journey and I really appreciate everything that everybody put into it.
Both sides, yeah.
Yeah. I'll take a motion to accept.
Move that the select board vote to approve the police union contract as presented.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, union.
Thank you. That's a big one.
Back at the table next week.
It's on the back. We need to sign this one as well.
They do.
You do have time?
Yeah, yes.
Why don't we do this? Start a joint meeting, do we just ask?
As long as they're in session.
Planning board, are you in session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a quorum?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Then we'll hear an update from the LePoli Companies, please.
Good evening, everyone, members of work. Thank you for allowing us some time this evening. My name is Morgan Pearson. I'm the senior vice president of real estate and development at the LePoli Companies. Happy to give you all an update tonight on the project and what we've been working on and what we're thinking about as we go forward. First, I wanted to just express from Sal and Mary their regrets for not being able to join. Mary had her wedding this past weekend and so she and Sal are spending some time with all the family before she heads out on her honeymoon. But let's send a best and of course they're keeping very fault in the project, as I think you all know. I thought it might be best, and I'm not sure how much time I have, Jim, but.
Forty-five minutes.
Hopefully we don't need all that, but.
Gonna make up some time.
Well, I think maybe we start with the video. I think it's the most exciting and, you know, give all of us something to think about and as I kind of talk afterwards and maybe more of a detailed update verbally. But if I could just set the stage on the video before we press play. This is, this is something our team spent a lot of time, energy and resources on, leading up to what's called the ICS, ICSE conference in Las Vegas. It's the largest retail conference in the country and it's, it was our way of kind of launching the project from a retail standpoint to, to the public. So we put together this illustrative video, getting people very excited about what we hope and what we intend to build here in Littleton, based on the approvals that we received from, you know, dating back a couple of years now. So I would just stress a couple of things. One, it's just, it's illustrative and hopefully you'll see just how exciting it can be, but it's, it was our effort to show and excite some of these tenants, which we were very successful in doing. We spoke to and met with over thirty different tenants across two days. It was a whirlwind, as you can imagine, in Las Vegas, but everyone was blown away and really excited about potentially bringing their businesses to Littleton. So I'll, I'll let the video speak for itself, but that's something to keep in mind as you watch.
This is really cool. News look. Maybe Morgan can come along.
So King Street's on your right there. You can see the old IBM buildings are a little bit re-clad in this image, but.
Looks a lot better on the big screen than on my laptop. Or a phone. Flip phone? Yeah.
Residential's in the background there. This is the plaza.
I like the kites. And the little porches.
Gary's new unit? Looking for the aquatic center?
I was gonna say, is that the aquatic center?
It's walking distance.
Is the toddle house still intact in this one?
I don't believe it's in this video, but it certainly, of course, will be intact.
Okay.
I like the names that you put on things.
Credit to our design team for that.
And I really hope you have the lights that hang, because those would have looked the best.
There it is. So that, as I mentioned, was incredibly well received and we've been sharing it since we were in Vegas last month with, with many additional groups who continue to express excitement. And what you see there is what we were, we're kind of calling phase one of the retail project, which is, what we're, what our team has been working on is progressing that plan forward. It's about eighty-four thousand square feet of retail. And the idea, of course, is building enough size and momentum and scale to attract all these tenants, who a lot of times want to work with other tenants or they'll join or they'll sign a lease if another tenant is, is interested. So we, this critical mass is, is very important on that. But I think sort of taking a step back and a more of a general update. And then, sorry, first I would also acknowledge Gary Armstrong in the audience. He's our head of construction. I think a lot of you are familiar with Gary.
Absolutely.
He and I are working closely and also meet bi-weekly with members of staff in the town to provide updates on both construction and the project. And, and that's been very helpful, I think, to both sides as, as our plans have advanced. But the project, the size and scale and complexity is, I think some of you can appreciate, involves a lot of work going on in the foreground and the background. And so I wanted to sort of speak to both of those tonight. On the foreground, which is what we're all seeing, we, of course, in April broke ground on the infrastructure in partnership with the town in achieving those Mass Works grants, updating utilities, updating the roadways, and sort of the phase one of, of that part of the project. And then we broke ground, you know, ribbon cutting, I think, which a lot of you, I remember seeing at, with the governor and the broader team in May. And the other piece, of course, is re-tenanting, that we know is important to the town, is re-tenanting the old IBM buildings. And that's been happening as well. I think if you've, you've, some of you may have seen some of those announcements. We're a little over forty, forty-five percent leased in one of the first buildings. We're actively talking to many, many tenants there. Even though the market is, I'm sure you've all seen the headlines across the country, is very, is much slower for office, we've been very pleasantly surprised at the amount of tours we've had, amount of interest in this site. I think for all the reasons, I hope, a lot of people are excited about it, which is the, the mixed-use nature of it, the, the retail is coming, the residential, but also because these buildings are actually very well-built. So a lot of tenants see that as a great opportunity to move their businesses into town. And so I know, for example, we're in a, in a very progressed conversations and negotiations with another tenant for another hundred thousand square feet that we hope to announce in a few months. So that is, in itself is a large effort, but that's progressing as well. And that's a little bit more of what I would kind of call the foreground and the background. Stuff that we're working on every day, every week is the MEPA application, which some of you have seen, that's progressing very, very well. A couple of weeks ago, we submitted the DEIR for that and expect the comment period to end, I think, July eleventh, with the goal of completing MEPA by October of this year. But that is a huge effort across multiple consultants within our own team as well, working across the entire master plan with, with the state. Mass Works two, kind of round two, these are obviously very important to the sequencing of putting in infrastructure, putting in roads and utilities across, I know, again, within partnership with the town, submitted that a few weeks ago as well, which is a big effort and much appreciated. So that's ongoing. We continue to advance our designs on both the residential and the retail. I mentioned, and you saw those, those advancements on the retail piece there. On the residential, I think we mentioned last time we were in front of the planning board, our phase one there is two buildings, three hundred units, will be the first residential phase of this project. The location of that on this site map is sort of the northern part next to, I think what's labeled there is, I'm not sure if that's building A, but we call it building A. That is also happens to be where the wastewater treatment onsite plant is. And so from a sequencing standpoint, the idea is to connect to the new sewer, that we understand it to be this summer, which is really exciting for us to hear, so that we can connect our current tenants into the sewer and then demolish that building to start work on that residential piece. So that feels like it's all on schedule right now. Been talking with, with the town and Nick Waller and team, and so we're focused on that as phase one of the residential. What else? I think that's the, that's the high-level, exciting news, but I'm happy to answer questions and if I, if I miss anything, I can certainly speak to it. And Gary's here as well on any construction questions. Thank you.
So you mentioned three hundred units in the first phase?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. And do you have any, have you made any decisions as to what the configuration of those units will be?
In terms of mix or?
Yeah, one bedroom, two bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, so the idea is, and it's laid out within our special permit approval, it's going to be ones, twos, and some, I think it's ones and twos and one plus dens as well, is the, is the current plan. Yeah.
I think the last time we talked, there was some question about the IBM buildings standing, but it sounds like you are definitely gonna keep them and use them?
That's, that's right. I mean, we're, we're strategically focusing on filling the first building and then the second. So I can say unequivocally, the first building is staying. The goal is to keep the second building. That is our intent right now. Again, with the plan is complex, that may change, but there's no intent at that time to do that, trying to keep both.
And then is phase one of retail all of the red?
It's the majority of that red there. I think if you look kind of far right, that'll probably be a secondary phase of retail, but it's really the, the, if you say sort of one, two, three, four, five buildings in the center there.
Did you go, Andrew?
I'm trying. And then is.
Slow, sorry.
The Yangtze River property, is that not included in this, in this plan?
It's within the plan and that's sort of the far right that I was.
Like building, building K or L?
It's beyond that.
It's just past K, yeah.
There was an L there.
There is an L there?
Yeah, if you slide over.
I'm getting there.
Oh, I see.
Awesome, yes, that's the Yangtze.
Okay, got it.
That's the street with the.
Acton Medical.
That's right.
Right, but you're saying like these buildings here are the phase one?
That's correct. E, D, G, F, H, and some sort of form of I and J, that's correct. And that's about eighty-four thousand square feet.
Morgan, any opportunity to, I know there's been some residents that have expressed concern through, through the select board about that tree that's, that was, that's standing there, well, saving that?
In Yangtze?
Yeah.
Which tree? I'm not sure I'm.
There's a tree over where L is.
A giant elm tree.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure if we've looked at that. Of course we have, yes, thank you, Mark. We can certainly keep looking at it. I haven't been involved with those conversations much, because I appreciate that, though, Jim, certainly look at it. I know on other trees where we want to save some as well, throughout the property.
Obviously, there's not a whole lot of Dutch Elms left, so we would love to see that preserved and protected during construction.
Good to know.
Thank you. No, go ahead.
No, go ahead. So phase one is gonna be two buildings of residential, phase one of residential.
Correct.
And you just mentioned, go do building one and then start to occupy it and then do building two, or is it gonna be simultaneous?
I think it's an ongoing conversation. I think the idea is, is more of a sequence like you described, but I, I don't think we're gonna try to stabilize one building. I think the idea is to start one and then sort of sequence them so one finishes a little bit before the other. I think that's more of a construction approach and keeping everybody busy, but, and as you can imagine, we've, you know, spread out some of that absorption in terms of leasing units, but the idea is to try to build it mostly all at once.
Can you access all of them?
Yeah, I was curious about the timeline. Obviously, you can't nail down a date precisely, but in general terms, how long before we start hearing about who will be, who will be moving in?
Are the retail or the?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, well, I would say that some, some of the groups are very, very interested and they're just looking for us to give a better timeline on the construction. So that's another way of saying this year is our intent and hopefully sooner than that, but when I, we make those announcements, we want to be very confident, so I, that's why I'm kind of hitching a little bit there, certainly this year. And there's a few retailers that may be, you know, within the next couple of months. So we're, you know, we're very pleased with how the market has responded. I will say, I think when a lot of, like, national retail groups think of where to go, they don't necessarily think of Littleton, but we have, through a lot of our efforts, brought the spotlight on this kind of region and they, and they see this as a really great opportunity because of the scale of it, because of, I think, what the town and LePoli have put together. It's, it's meaningful enough. I think if it were a lot little smaller, they may not be as, we were, we were very pleased to see that our, this vision is being adopted and appreciated by the market. Because that's, you know, there's always a little bit of risk there, but.
Are the, you, the first two buildings, are they N and Q or O and?
Uh, y- yes, it's, sorry, some of these letters have changed in my eyes. It's Q and O.
Q and O.
Right.
Okay, and the parking garage as well?
That's correct.
That's phase one?
That's, that's the phase one of the residential. That's right.
And the hotel is in phase one or?
The hotel is not in, it's phase one right now. We are talking to hotel groups, we're, we're actively doing a more detailed study on the marketplace and, and that's been positive as well so far, at least preliminary feedback. But we're, we're picking our battles, but that's certainly in the mix as well.
And if you were to pick a quarter when construction actually starts, what?
For which piece?
For the, well, you said the residential and the retail all are roughly the same, right?
I think, it's a good question. I think we're targeting Q one, Q two with next year. But I think maybe, yeah, I think that's, that's a safe bet.
For both?
Correct. If we can start sooner, we will, of course, but.
I, I think it'd be helpful if you started including like a Gantt chart that showed, you know, by building with the estimated start stop on those are. I know it's buried, some of it's buried in all the text, but I think some kind of summary like that in a, in a standard Gantt would be really useful on here. And that way we'd get a better feel for how long the infrastructure construction's going on and when you're starting to phase in the actual construction and timing. Construction duration of those buildings would be really useful for us.
That's totally fair, absolutely. Yeah, we, we can work on that and look to share that.
And the other properties there behind the mobile station have been figured into, haven't been figured into the plan yet?
Not yet.
And 410?
410, yes. That is something we're working on as well. We're looking at, we've kind of been noodling around at different plans there and the size of the residential and other aspects of it, but it's certainly in the mix and more, more to come on that, but not, not a huge update right now.
What is the, in the retail space, what is the largest retail that you're trying to?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like twelve thousand square feet, maybe, or maybe thirteen.
Sure these guys are.
Yeah.
You're lucky for that, too.
Yeah, it's within, it's within our, I think, parameters that we have, but there's a few, maybe one or two, we're calling sort of junior anchors, and that's that, you know, I'll just use an example, like a Barnes and Noble or something like that, that would.
Ravens Nest.
Yep. Exactly, so there's a few of those, but the other ones are, are smaller than that. And then, of course, there's restaurants that are sort of five to eight thousand square feet.
This is actually for Mar and for you or for the planning board. I know, and you've told me this so many times, I never remember, the affordable units are, I think designated, at least some of them to be in phase one, is that correct?
Yes.
How, how many and, and will they be included in those buildings?
So there definitely going to be affordable units in those. We had had some conversations with the town about phase one. The way the, the documents are written, it's just a matter of keeping up with it, but a phase one was gonna allow to have a smaller amount of units. I don't off the top of my head, I want to say a dozen, maybe, or a little bit less in phase one, but then the, the subsequent phases would have more, a lot more from a percentage standpoint and so on and so on, so that we'd be keeping up with that ten percent requirement.
And it's three, you're, you're putting three hundred units in phase one?
That's correct.
But only a dozen affordable?
For that, that first phase, that's, that's the idea.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware that, that had changed.
The bylaw allows for, on a large development, for the first phase of it to have fewer affordables, but we do have to get to the ten percent.
Thanks.
Where does the toddle house end up?
I have thoughts on that. I think there's a few options we're noodling on right now. It may stay where it is, it may get moved around. We'll, I think we'll come back to you guys with a much more defined plan on that, but it's, it's certainly going to be preserved, we understand that. And we want that.
Anybody else?
As far as the Gantt chart, you'll show then also what you're, when face, when you're expecting phase two would be?
Of course, yep.
And then is phase two mainly all residential or are you planning on doing another, building out more retail at that time or?
It, it may be the hotels is, is defined phase two and then phase three is the secondary residential, or maybe it goes back to retail, or maybe we hop over to 410. I think those are a little bit market-driven right now, but, and I, and if the, the residential does extraordinarily well, which we expected to, then maybe we just flip to the, to those other two buildings right there and finish off what we're calling the residential village. It's sort of managing that, all that construction and our tenants and seeing how, what happens to the second IBM building. So those are all factors where we're prepared to do any of them, I think, is one answer, but it's a little bit fluid at this moment.
And this shows like, I can't tell if there are coming exits there are on two King Street, are there four you're maintaining or how many are you planning on maintaining?
I believe it's five, but it's something we're, you know, we're actually having conversations with MassDOT on as well actively as part of the MEPA process, but I think the current plan may be five, if you can count one near the hotel there. And there, there's one at one point over near the Yangtze that, that might go on the other side, actually, but it's not showing on that, on this plan, actually.
And do, and there's, so there's five exits, but two pedestrian crosswalks? That's the?
Um, I think that's to be determined, but I, we would, we would certainly make it safe.
And is there talk of any pedestrian for Gray Road?
Yes, I mean, we're, we're looking and committed to upgrading both pedestrian and bicycle as well as the vehicle, you know, exits and, and entries to the site, but I think there's gonna be a sidewalk along that whole piece and there's a bike lane and we're making all of those improvements as part of, sort of our upgrade to, to that part of the road and then entering and exiting the site.
I would like to make sure you pay special attention to the traffic flow around all of those exits, especially since you've got, once you, if you do, or I should say, when you get a hundred percent occupancy, there's two large, three large industrial buildings, that road right in the middle there will be cutting through all of the retail with massive amounts of inbound and outbound traffic twice a day. So I'm thinking about the overall flow and not just how many road cuts. I think is very important on this project.
I appreciate that and for what it's worth, I think our interests are aligned on that because. because we also don't want our retail disrupted. We want that to be, feel safe for pedestrians. There's a large pedestrian piece of that, so I think our focus has been having people exit and enter on Great Road and then one or two other sort of primaries. Exactly, exactly.
You could get rid of some of those extra road cuts, I think, would make things better rather than we have five, we're going to take advantage of five.
And possibly putting like, if it's possible to put traffic around the 495 side of the building for those industrials or something?
Coming in off Shea Street, is what I was thinking.
Well, even if you can, even if you could put a road behind S and R there to the parking garage or something, right? So that they're not all cutting through the middle of the?
Retail space?
The retail space, something, yeah, something along that border or something would be.
But anyway, I think you have to pay, it's very special, I think, to that because, like I said, when you fully occupy those buildings, it's going to make it very, very congested if people are trying to use the retail facilities or the restaurants at those times.
We totally agree in whether it's disincentivizing or actually physically blocking at certain times or getting rid of it altogether, we're looking at all different.
Is there any discussion for tram over 495 over the point?
Supply a bit of subway, we're going to get a boring machine.
A little dig.
So your phase two is really based on interest, commercial interest who drives any changes to phase two not being a hotel, which might happen anyway or more housing?
That's right. That's right. I mean, we're taking a big bite out of what these two, these two sort of resi and retail phases and then, you know, I think from there it'll be strategic and or as the market sort of decides. I think we'll have ample time to give everybody kind of a heads up on how that's progressing.
Yeah, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Awesome stuff. Nice, Gary.
Let your work begin.
Thank you, Judy.
So we were thinking about maybe going out of order so that we could do the hazard mitigation plan next.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mar and two Cal Town Planner. So the town has been through the hazard mitigation training process with the help of a lot of different departments, residents, staff, department staff. And now we're nearing the end on this. The next step is to ask the select board to vote the certificate of adoption for the plan. Following that vote, then the plan officially gets submitted back to MIMA and FEMA for their final approval, after which point we can get the reimbursement for the cost of preparing the plan or less the local share. Happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Did we see a draft of this earlier? Have there been any changes since then?
Not a lot of changes. We broadened, MAPC broadened it out with a few updates based on some questions about different areas that there was some reported flooding over time. So they added that and they added some more of the public outreach information in there. God, it made it a better plan.
I guess the only question that might be in here, the, how often do we have to do this?
Every five years.
Five days?
Yeah.
And how long have you been working on it?
Five years. Four and a half.
It was much better this time because, you know, we knew what to expect. We leaned heavily on MAPC to help us through it again, but with the changes at the fire department, we didn't have that leadership at the start to help pull it through, but now they're up to speed and on it.
Any other questions?
Nope. It's, it's a really long report. Could you talk a little bit about the Mill Pond Dam and anything that's happening with that for the hazard mitigation or there's no plan or?
So there was a question on the Mill Pond Dam. Their outlet structure includes a sluice gate that there was some concern raised about that. However, when you step back and look at the flooding potential, if that whole dam weren't to let go, the next control structure is the culvert that's underneath 495. So I'm going like this, there's not much, not much water flow that could pass through that. So the downstream flooding effects of that are not as bad as you might expect. We're just looking at the dam rimming. So I got to draw on some of my safety dams work shortly after I graduated college, so interesting to look into that.
Great. Chuck, I can't see it.
I feel mitigated.
You feel mitigated, all right.
I guess the question is the future. Do you see any future concerns? I mean, planning, you guys put a lot of thought into this. This is, now that you've got the structure down, a lot of work went into the last one. This one you're kind of pretty set on now, not a ton of changes except how does, how does changes to the community really affect this document? You know, we're talking about 550 and things. Is that, things like that really affect this document anyway?
Not, in that case, not really. The fun one about that is it's a redevelopment of an existing developed site and they're taking care of their flooding.
One site.
Site. One of the changes we're noticing is the, with the new FEMA floodplain maps, those, we've noticed those changes. So it was interesting to be going through this and the new updated maps at about the same timeframe.
Okay.
Moved that the select board vote to approve and sign the certificate of adoption for the hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mar.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, guys.
Does the planning board need to vote on it as well? No?
Thank you.
Mary, if you could come up with a traffic mitigation plan?
I haven't started this one.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Make sure you do something productive with this timing.
You want to stay, I know you do.
All right, we'll bounce back to public input and members' updates. Does the public have any input?
Rob, 25, Jennifer, a couple real quick. You may be about to comment on this, but there is a Shaker Lane School Community Forum tomorrow from six to eight at the middle school cafeteria. I'm getting heavily involved in this from another, a variety of aspects. I encourage everything you can do to bring attention to it. I fear that there's too few that are learning about the changing numbers and other update coming in August, as you folks know from your last going committee. But there's also, Karen, I know you're previewing this yes for Littleton impact that was just created. So there's attempts by an outreach group to communicate information there at Third Thursday. So there's other things going on. Anything that can be done in order to bring information to the public. I appreciate whatever you can do. Separately with Kirby tonight, just want to put a plug for LCTV. I attended that Super Saturday, wasn't able to give public comment, but I'm a big supporter of LCTV. And before I forget, I've seen a preview of your article for our newsletter pertaining Shaker Lane. I thank you for doing that. Back to LCTV, I'm starting to be concerned and as I learn a little bit more about their financial backing and how the town supports some of it, but maybe there's a need in the future as their funds, reserve funds kind of dwindle down. I don't know enough to be an authority, it's something I intend to do more, but I think they provide a great service. What you just saw here tonight, Mark couldn't be better, Judy, the whole team really does a lot. So I just want to give that a plug too, Karen.
Thank you.
Number updates, Chuck?
Sure. Well, obviously it's a pretty exciting night tonight, so just another thank you to John Borowski for all that he's done, for our veterans, for our graduating seniors, for the scholarship trust and just anybody that came across his path. He's just a very humble guy as we all saw tonight and he's touched a lot of lives in Littleton. So thank you, John. Thank you, Kirby as well. Rob just mentioned that and it's been, I think Kirby and I kind of cut our teeth around the same time when he entered LCTV, I started doing the school committee and the select board. It's been kind of fun to grow with him. He's just always adds a laugh. Like to thank him for his service as well. Also want to do a congratulations for, you know?
Oh, I'm going to see.
Our newest Littleton police officer, our newest patrolman Noah Graham. I was looted too early, the chief was here in exact obsession, but graduated the Boylston Police Academy and today was his first day on the job, so Godspeed and congratulations. And Rob already said something about tomorrow night's meeting, so I don't have to. Yep, thank you.
Same, a couple of same sentiments, John Borowski and Kirby. You know, it's one thing to hire qualified people, but it's to hire good people, you know? And that's people that really integrate with the community and get involved. And I think those two represent that to the T. Congratulations once again to Noah Graham, Patrolman Graham. We had our goal setting meeting on Friday, or probably a few of us would have tried to attend his graduation, but so our annual goal setting, I had mentioned Friday, I don't know if anyone else is going to speak to it, but we set our, not only our individual contribution to the goals for the upcoming year, but also as a board, some of those things that we want to accomplish and continue to grow on, things that we have been working on for the last few years. As well as setting our town administrators, some of his goals and some of the things that he wants to accomplish, he shared with us. So you'll be seeing a little bit more, probably a more public document, I guess, presented from that meeting and what that looks like. Shaker Lane, we just mentioned. Continue on with Third Thursdays, just to let everybody know. The last thing I had mentioned that just remember, our kids are out of school, so be that person in Littleton that breaks. You know, when you see kids crossing because, you know, we can't depend on, we have a lot of transient traffic through town. Be that person that breaks and lets, you know, lets people cross. That's all I have. Thank you.
Nothing for me today.
So I attended Third Thursday last week. It was a fairly small crowd, but energetic. And I talked to Mike de Blasio from the Fire Department who was there. He said that the Fire Department got another round of grants for car seats and they're doing car seat installations. You can call, there's a, look it up on the Fire Department website, there's a number. You can call or an email to schedule an appointment to have your car seat checked, your installation checked. And they have car seats for caregivers as necessary. It's a great program. I want to thank him for doing that. He, from talking to him, he's cross-trained people in several other towns that do this now, so I think it's a great program, so.
Yeah, Mark, just to put onto that, I've used that service, you know, the grandson. And when I heard about it, you know, here in the Fire Department putting it on, I said, you know, I'm going to go down into the station and they set me up with an appointment with him and I thought it was going to be a five minute thing. Oh, no. A solid hour of training how to put that car seat in, doing it. And it's, it was, it's really interesting and you just don't realize the child safety aspect of all the things you don't think of necessarily as a parent or a grandparent. So he, fantastic training they've received to do that and it's just a great opportunity to educate yourself on the car seat, how it works and the safety positions and.
It only works if you install it correctly.
But notice Gary didn't do it for his kids, only for his grandson.
This is true.
They were sitting on the console.
They're not allowed to watch this, so.
And I think they'll come in front of us in a future meeting to promote this a little more. I also attended the senior hot dog luncheon last week. I was very well attended and thanks to COA for throwing that, putting that on. And Karen, Jim, Mar and Cooper and I toured, I don't, what's the name of the development in Somerville?
Nine, Lab Nine.
Lab Nine, who is a Littleton company that does modular housing, is building an affordable housing unit in Somerville. 168 units, nine floors. We toured it, it's quite impressive.
All nine, we toured, all nine floors.
Right.
Someone wanted to go see.
Exactly, the rooftop.
Hey, how often do you get that view, right?
It was quite impressive what they were doing and hope we can partner with them to do something in town in the future.
Yeah, those modular units are extraordinary. I think the thing that, and I've said this, I've said this a couple of times during the tour. The thing that impressed me most about it was that, you know, it's the, what they're building right now is going to have affordable units, deeply affordable units and commercial rate units all in the same buildings. And the finishes are very close to the same across the board for all of them. The quality in those units was really, really impressive and they're so quiet because they're each their own, you know? With the modular unit, you've got extra, extra thick walls and extra thick floors and, you know, they were still doing construction outside and we were inside and you could barely hear anything right outside the window. So it was, it was interesting and I think they said they have, what, 80, 90 folks employed here in Littleton? And so it was, it was a nice opportunity to see an employer here in Littleton and see what they, see what they can do in practice in Somerville and then they said they've got lots of projects slated after that, so.
Clarendon Hill.
Clarendon, yes, thank you.
Yeah, the retreat was on Friday. We retreated all the way to the fire station and it was.
Luxurious.
It was, it was very, very posh, but thank you to the Fire Department, of course. But I think, I just want to say seriously for a minute, it's really important that, that time that we take to look and we looked back to see what our goals were before and what we planned to do and did we accomplish it? Are there any items left that we need to, you know, continue on for the following year? And then we worked on what we plan on focusing on for the next year. And I, I just think that having that direction is really important for all of us as we are moving forward into the next year. So thanks to everybody for coming to that on a Friday afternoon, no less. And yeah, the Lab Nine tour was excellent and that's about all I have.
You have an update on the tour or anything? You said no. Actually, I was going to make that, if you could just give me one minute, please.
Mark's heading up.
No, he's going to leave.
He's done. We're jumping out of order again, I think, right?
Just one great fan. Do I want to wait?
You can do it.
Oh, okay. The contractor of Voli is still continuing to chip through the ledge on King Street, just past Farmstead. They were able to install two manholes on either side of the duckbanks at the King Street IBM entrance and connect those two manholes with the pipe. They have under 100 feet left of pipe installation to go to connect the system to the first manhole at IBM, and approximately 40 feet to go from the second manhole to the Westford Line. All of that work should be completed in three or four weeks, and today I joined Nick Lawler and his team with National Grid and Mass DOT to try and finalize, finish the paving. The paving operations will begin Monday, June 30th, to start paving from Littleton High School to Russell Street. Once this is completed, Revoli intends to pave some parts of the common, but we are still coordinating this with Mass DOT, and Nick will continue to provide updates, and that's everything, as of 3:30 today.
Right, appointments. We have several appointments to make. We have a couple of changes from what's in the agenda. Kim Hall from the Clean Lakes Committee was not able to actually move forward with that, and the, with the Historical Commission, the Chairwoman asked us to hold off and give some more time for them to communicate amongst themselves before we move forward with those appointments, so. But otherwise, we've got a slate of great folks, some returning, some new, and can't thank you enough. None of this gets done unless folks volunteer, so thank you very much for stepping up.
Do we need to read them out, one at a time, and then vote?
I think, I think I have to.
I was, no, no, now you don't. You can just say, you know.
As listed.
You know, in the table below, as listed.
With the exception of the, all right.
With the exception of the three, the Chairwoman, so that's total of 16.
Okay.
Moved at the Select Board vote to approve the appointments as listed on the table in 5A, the Select Board discussion, with the exception of Kim Hall from the Clean Lakes Committee, Elizabeth Mubrak from the Historical Commission, and John Ledger from the Historical Commission.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second, Karen's thanks for volunteering, and also get sworn in.
Yep, get sworn in. Thanks, everyone.
Get sworn into Town Clerk's office, if you didn't know. I just assumed.
Let's see, joint meeting, no, we did that already. We've got a liquor license.
Derangible.
Derangible wants a one-day liquor license at Fay Park on Sunday, September 21st.
Road race?
Road race, yeah, between the hours of 12:00 and 4:00. Police and fire had no issues. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Everything was listed.
Did a great job.
I thought, I thought I could, I thought I was.
We thought you could too, but.
Yeah, and I was, I asked that, yeah, this was an oversight.
That's okay.
No worries.
We'll rubber stamp it for you.
Thank you.
Moved at the Select Board.
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, because I'm involved in the race committee.
Are you partaking in the beer consumption, is that why?
I hope so.
Just doesn't want to be excluded.
Moved at the Select Board vote pursuant to Master and the Law, Chapter 131, Section 14, to issue a special license, also known as a one-day liquor license, to Colin Nurk and Christopher Loring, Derangible Brewing Company LLC, for wine and malt beverages to be served during the Littleton Road Race Event on Sunday, September 21st, 2025, between the hours of 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to recuse myself from the next discussion.
Okay. I'm a little bit ahead of schedule. I'd like to take a five-minute recess if we can.
Can you?
Thank you.
I got to switch.
Thank you.
Forgot some elevator music for the public.
All right, we're back, and we are going to discuss the second cannabis dispensary license next. Chuck, you had requested this one, so I'll let you pick it off.
Okay, so thank you for putting it on the agenda, and Jim, thanks for reaching out to Town Council to kind of get a state of the.
Status.
Where we're at, yeah, status, yep. Jim did just get this from Town Council this afternoon and sent it off to us, so we really haven't had the chance to dig into it, but the reason I wanted it on there is just because we've kind of, we've had some people come in and request an HCA with us, and we didn't do anything after that. We didn't, we didn't kind of make, we didn't make any decisions as to how we wanted to proceed, and that's all, I just didn't want it to be forgotten about, because regardless of who gets the license or possesses the license, 3% of the sales is still, CCC hasn't changed that yet, so we automatically get 3% of the sales, the retail sales, and maybe it's $100,000, maybe it's half a million dollars. We don't know what they're going to do for sales if they, if someone does open, but I think it's worth, if it's $100,000, we can pay for firefighter, or police, another police officer, or whatever happens to be, so.
Or earmark, earmark that money for something that we talked about.
We did talk about that as well, yeah, just to peg that money for open space.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a number of things.
We're trying to get to 3% without affecting the public.
For the CPC.
Yeah, CPC, so that's, that's another option.
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to bring it back so it's top of mind. At this point, if nobody else has anything to say about it, I'll, I'll table it for now and then take a look at where we're at, and just request it to go on back, back on the agenda. Soon.
I mean, we never closed, I mean, we never closed the availability of our people to submit HCAs, correct?
Correct.
So, have any, has anyone submitted any?
We've had interest.
There's been, there's been two separate entities that have expressed interest, yes, both of which attended meetings.
Right.
Presented.
Those were the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all. I mean, we, we had some folks that did put themselves out there and say that they'd be interested, and.
If I may, through the chair, I have one question. And wasn't there a sunset clause for the 3% when it was originated by, yeah, five years? There was a sunset. So, I'm just, I'm just, I specifically remember that, because in a previous community, that was, that was a, that was a big deal, that.
That was, that was for the community betterment. The other half of the HCA, where we used to be able to say we want.
Oh, yeah.
Mitigation.
Another $3,000.
$10,000.
It's a 3%.
Yeah.
And get more patrols, yeah, so it was basically, there's two different, and you're right on that, it was, it was, that would sunset based on the length of, you know, the contract, five years, if we signed a contract today, it'd be five years from today.
And they're incredibly restricted now, anyway.
We, we, with the one retail license that we do have, we don't have anything, we don't have any funds that are coming in for any kind of mitigation. Yeah, so, I apologize for.
No, 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 no.
But, Madam Chair, if, if nobody else really has anything to say, I don't think we're, at least I can say for myself, I don't think I'm educated enough based upon the new information coming in to discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like we've got three options in terms of the HCAs. If we agree to discuss them, and one is do nothing, an application is filed for an HCA, then we can consider it then, issue a request for proposals for an HCA, and then we could decide whether it would, whether we'd like to issue more HCAs than the number of special permits available. Only the first applicant to obtain a permit would be able to go into business.
Yeah.
And then approve all HCA requests or grant HCA waivers to any applicant, and then, again, only the first applicant to obtain a permit is able to commence operation.
I mean, I wouldn't mind, I mean, the Town Administrator's Office, just to open up, just to let, I don't know.
It is open.
Yeah, we're doing one right now, right?
But when you sit dormant for, you sit dormant for, you know, a couple of years, a year, it's, people just assume nothing's going to happen, so I don't know. If we know there's interest, we might.
Reach out to the, to interested parties.
You know, I don't know, because they've expressed interest, and I believe out of that meeting, we said we will have something in place in the coming months to, and we've, well, there's the coming months, 10 months later, but I don't know what that, that looks like.
Are you giving an action item to Jim?
Yeah, I, what do you think? I don't, what's the proper way to, how do we do it initially? I mean, that's kind of where I'm at.
We did put it out there, and everybody was chomping at the bit to.
Right, right.
To get in. What's your thought on you reaching out to those two parties because they've expressed interest?
Yeah, I'll just search emails.
I don't think Town Council would have any problem with that, with, you know, soliciting those two parties.
I'll confirm it first.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to.
No, understood.
So, why not just issue an RFP? I mean, it's just to issue an RFP.
If, if these parties don't come forward, that's, because we really didn't do anything, I guess I kind of assumed that we, something that was said at our last meeting must have kept those two parties away, waiting until we took some action, so that, that might be exactly how we take the action.
I don't have a problem reaching out to these parties, but I would say issue an RFP and then tell them that the RFP is out there, rather than proactively going after them, because then it's like we're favoring those two versus anyone else that might be interested. I'd rather generally announce.
We're letting those two know that look for an RFP.
But we're telling them before there's an RFP, rather than saying there's an RFP you can.
But she's also saying we do nothing and act if an HCA comes before us.
Right, so that was one option, but that's one option, or we announce that we, we are accepting HCAs, right?
I think it's a combination of both.
That's what, I, I agree with you, so what I'm saying is, let's announce, let's put out an RFP and then tell those two parties that there's, that there is something out there, rather than reaching out to them, because then it's like we're favoring them over anyone else that might be interested.
I'd rather not reach out to them and, yeah, just, I mean, it's a bandwidth thing. Can we, can we put together an RFP? Yeah, but what are they not doing after putting together an RFP if we do have interested parties that may be watching this? This is on the agenda.
What's the platform? How do we make, on what platform do we make the announcement?
Yeah, that's for the RFP, or that.
Well, I, whether it is an RFP or a notification that, you know, the Select Board is accepting HCA proposals?
It's really as a reminder, we don't have to even do an RFP as a reminder.
Right, that's, that's my point.
The Select Board has open, you know, we are open for HCAs.
You just did it.
Right, I mean, that's literally what I just, I.
But option.
You're watching it, you'll.
Option two is, literally says, issue an RFP for an HCA.
Yeah.
So, that's the one that I prefer, rather than just knocking on people's doors or quietly knocking on people's doors. There must be a way that we issue them and notify.
I'd rather do nothing.
If we issue a request for proposal, we've got to come up with our criteria, our selection criteria ahead of time, so it's not just a matter of.
It's a bandwidth thing.
Yeah, it's not just a matter of, you know, I don't know, shouting out to the world, you know, we would like to, we would like for you to please send us your HCA proposals.
Well, that would be true if we had an HCA anyway, whether we would approve it or not.
If we get multiple HCAs, then, yeah, we would still have to come up with selection criteria.
So, I will say, I've been contacted and asked, what's the deal, are you guys going to have another meeting? I wasn't, I didn't come away from our last meeting thinking that if someone came in with an HCA the next day, that we would take it under advisement and either prove it, negotiate it, or poo-poo it. So, when they asked me, I said, I don't, I don't really know. So, I don't have any, because they've already reached out, I don't have any problem reaching back to them, and then if they don't come forward by our next meeting, then we could get into number two, so that we, we're not resting on it for too long.
I mean, if someone, I mean, if an entity unilaterally submitted something in the middle of drafting the RFP, that, that doesn't gate them from the, from the Select Board not taking action, so you can still take action.
Yeah, that's, I mean, yeah, absolutely. I, I just don't want to put more on your office.
Appreciate it.
If we do have a solution.
The question is whether, whether we just blanket approve HCAs, or are we coming up with a criteria by which we evaluate them?
That's one of the threshold questions. That's one of the threshold questions.
And, and if we have a criteria, are we saying any that meet the criteria, or are we somehow ranking them and saying we have one license, we're picking one?
I believe Ivia did present us with
Breakdown of percentages.
Boil plate HCA, that's basically out there for anybody, if they want to put their, fill in the blanks and...
We didn't want to add to it. I, I remember, the discussion was, you could get it as complex as you want, or you could just go with the
Keep it simple.
The simple HCA, and then we push, goes forward to the, to planning and then...
I don't know that those, that H, I mean, I'm thinking back, but I don't remember that, what the evaluation criteria was, that we would say yes or no.
Yeah, we can take it out. We should definitely did the work for us.
I know, I know there was the blanket HCA, I just don't remember what the evaluation criteria was, if that was spelled out in the HCA.
Yeah, I just don't think we ever went forward and said whether we were going to use the criteria, or whether we were going to basically say, this person doesn't qualify based on, so, but we're going to move all of them forward, give them the go-ahead to get to planning and get a permit through their, through their thing.
We can also look back on a few years ago now, but, and, um...
The scoring part of it.
Just the criteria that we used when we did issue the two licenses, the two permits. Those permits? Or...
You issued the HCAs, right?
The HCAs, so they can go to get permitted from the planning boards, and they can go to the state.
But I think that was slightly different in that they had to have the HCA before they could go to the next step, and you could only issue the number of HCAs of licenses, and now we can, don't have to be the...
No, you could, um, chickpea issue, anyone that came in, they had a boil plate, and if you want to sign this, you want to open up, go ahead, there's, anybody could, and they had to go through the planning board process and whatnot, but, um, and it wasn't tied to licenses, they just have at it.
So, the soonest that a permit's available is September twentieth, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, why don't we take a little bit of time to look at what our selection criteria were before?
Okay. Because, is that... Yeah, I mean, I don't think we'd have, would have, even if we had somebody come in tomorrow and submit an HCA,
Right.
we probably wouldn't have action until then.
Right.
We'd have to go through the vetting process and all that kind of stuff. The only other question I had relative to that, and I just, just saw that, like I said, tonight when we got here, is, um, the, that, trying to read, read the thing, talk at the same time, it doesn't work. Littleton Path Carey was, I'm trying to look for her words. Basically, the, the permit was revoked.
Right.
License provision?
The special permit was, um, yeah, by the planning board.
Last page in.
They declared the permit lapsed, but then, um, the state came through and said that anybody within a certain time period who lost their permit during that time gets an extra two years.
But I think they still have to meet the criteria of CCC, and you have to have, uh, I, that's why I wanted to table this and look into it, but I don't know if Littleton Path Carey, when they lost their viable location?
Well, it says, it is a planning board document, it's pretty clear, the last...
Right, but I'm talking about CCC. If, if the planning board, even though they revoked the permit, or didn't renew the permit, or whatever...
No significant...
I think one of the criteria with the CCC is, in order to go to the next step, in order to possess a permit, you have to have, uh, either a letter of intent or a signed lease, or you have to have a location that's tied to it. I could be wrong, but that's the way I understand it.
And so they would have until September twentieth to come up with that?
We got to work on it. We have to put this on the future agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's only if it qualifies does it go to September twentieth.
I think it, according to the letter from Ivia, it looks like they go to September twentieth.
Until September twentieth to make substantial use of the permit or commence construction. So, I do think they've got a little bit of time.
That's, that's why I wanted to table it, because I don't, I don't have
Yeah.
the, you know, the clarity on it, or don't think we should make a decision on it, which, again, will probably take us to September twentieth.
No, I think it's going to take us some time to move forward, no matter what. I guess I'm just trying to think of what we want to do between now and the next time we talk. What's our homework?
Reviewing the HCA and any criteria and decide whether, how many we're going to issue.
And are we looking to forward them all to planning? As a free-for-all, if we're comfortable with
Right.
all of them, um, if they meet the requirements of whatever the struck, limited structure outline is, or are we actually going to grade?
Yeah.
That's the two, really.
Okay.
So...
No action.
Are you going to take the lead on that, Chuck?
Sure. Criteria for HCAs?
I guess we all just need to put our thinking caps on and think about whether we want to do a
RFP.
And prove them all.
Yeah, one of, one of the three that she outlined.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank Ivia for us, for getting it to us.
Yeah.
I already have.
You did, we didn't.
I, oh, of course.
I haven't seen her in a while, haven't met any business.
That's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
Alright, Jimmy, I already gave your update.
Uh, I'm ready. Uh, so, uh, we've already touched upon the graduation of our newest, uh, public safety officer, uh, the, there's a couple inside baseball things here, but nothing, nothing bad. Um, waterproofing, uh, the report that I have forwarded to the select board for the police station, for the moisture that was going in, into the, into the windows and everything. So, that report, uh, uh, was submitted on Friday. Uh, I've also, also, uh, let every, the, the select board know that the insulation is completed at thirty-six King Street.
Yeah, yeah.
That, uh, and, uh, according to our facilities manager, when he was in, uh, this morning in the building at thirty-six, at, at King Street before the department head meeting, that, uh, uh, he could, he could notice a difference already, uh, just from that, which is, which is fantastic.
That's a good day to notice a difference.
Yeah.
Is it? Well, tomorrow's going to be better, I guess, I understand. And thanks to the library trustees, the, uh, automatic door opener has been installed over at the, uh, over the, uh, over at the library, and apparently there is another part of a, of, there's a pin for a rod that goes down, and even though the hours are there, people still tend to pull on it, which affects it, and then, then, then it breaks, and they have to keep doing it again, so...
That's good engineering. Who's going to pull on the door?
The Historic Commission is doing a tour of the Orchard Buildings. I believe, uh, that's going to be Wednesday of this week. Uh, they are just assessing them, they're going to do the, the two buildings and the barn. And, uh, through, uh, the ADA Commission, uh, they received a state grant for architectural, for other transition plan, the architectural barrier assessment uh, in the town, and they are coordinating, uh, with the Collins Center, uh, it's for, agreed for forty-eight thousand dollars to do that, and that will touch municipal buildings, trails, parks, sidewalks, things of that nature. It's not going to, uh, I don't believe it will, and I confirmed, uh, with the town clerk this morning, it does not, um, include schools, uh, that's it. Cataldo, uh, the construction, uh, Mr. Cataldo's company is mobilizing today, and the construction will start tomorrow at Wickham Field, so, and that, uh, that project will be done, uh, the, the Wickham Field will be done, I believe, in late September, uh, early October. Uh, the tennis courts should be done, uh, before, before the start of school. And, uh, also, last, I want to let you know that, uh, the chairwoman for the Council on Aging, um, Marge Payne has stepped down, she's still staying on the board, but, uh, Anita Harding is going, and, uh, Marge Payne was there as chair, as chairwoman for eleven years, and she has passed the, the gavel over to Anita Harding, is now is going to be the chairwoman for the, uh, Council on Aging, and that's it.
Do we know Anita?
Yeah, shy cursing. Yes.
That's great news, congratulations.
Thank you, Marge.
Thank you to Marge, for sure.
Do we have a date when the school department's moving? To thirty-six King?
That, that's a joke.
Have they moved?
Oh, yeah.
I thought they were waiting till after the installation.
Yeah, no, no, everything was, uh, to try and coordinate under, at one, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sound so... It, it, it was coordinated, uh, with Pox and Rec and, uh, and, and the school administration, trying to do it at the same time.
Okay, and can we have someone organize like an open house over there, a public session, so people can come in and see the new building at some point?
And I know that there is going to be a, uh, they're, obviously, they're, they're in there, but then there will be, uh, an official opening, ribbon-cutting, things of that nature, that will be scheduled, without a doubt, so...
And I know you, um, we decided to lock the door at the far end of the building, can we put up a sign saying so?
Yeah, we were absolutely, saying, as a matter of fact, that the, uh, department head meeting this morning, I had asked that facilities, uh, put signs appropriate that basically have moved to thirty-six, thirty-six King Street, or, or whatever other signs are required, yes. Thank you for that. That's it.
Okay. Minutes. Anybody have any requests for corrections or questions, concerns? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Moved at the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the select board meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second?
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Littleton.